All right, take two. Good morning. It is now eight o'clock on January eighteen, twenty twenty-two. And I did call the order, the Shenango County IDA Board Meeting of January eighteen, twenty twenty-three. We'll go ahead and roll call ourselves in.
Blanchard here.
Raymond here.
Ryan here.
Given here.
Corey here.
Burton here. We'll wait the reading of the IDA admission statement, which can also be found on our website. Need a motion to approve the minutes of December twentieth, twenty twenty-two?
So many.
Need a second?
Also.
Given here.
Okay, any discussion edits? Hearing none, we'll vote.
Blanchard, I.
Raymond, I.
Ryan, I.
We are abstained.
Given.
Corey abstains. Burton, I. But answer reported, December thirty, oh, past, sorry. Please make note that Zeno and Corey abstained. Approval of minutes, December twentieth, twenty twenty, uh, yeah. Financial reported, December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, financial statements. Kathy Jo, you're on.
Okay. Page one of the financials, the statement of financial position. I did update property and equipment asset lines and removed the airport. And then added the five one-lot ab, which is now one hundred fifty-six thousand.
Okay, thank you for making those adjustments.
There is a net activity of negative sixty-two thousand. And that is because we did not get all of the rental revenue that we budgeted for the airport. And because of the building sale, we had to remove that profit with the assets in the balance sheet.
Essentially, though, we've made up the difference with the sale.
Yes, yeah, here to date, the profit was twenty-two thousand for the sale.
Okay, thank you.
The only thing, based on Brian, you know, I would like to get what is that we still, if you look at the last page five, we're still worse by ninety-seven thousand.
Looks like a lot of that would be made up where. What was, so Hybridge Wind was about forty-four thousand less than anticipated.
I don't know.
Were they paying the way, yeah, that's.
Is it because they haven't started?
Because they weren't in production yet? Okay. Okay. And then obviously, the other sixty-five thousand of that number comes in.
Would have been the rental.
Would have been the rental.
That's twenty-two, the other twenty-something, yeah, sixty-five thousand was.
So between those two things, that's a hundred and. Eight-hundred-nine thousand.
Well, the only reason I bring it up is that I want to see a slight benefit.
Well, we can't live like that.
No, that's for sure.
Okay. Thanks for playing.
So Brian, just as a question for me, it would be helpful at some point, I could maybe sit with you and Randy to understand where we were and then how we got to where we are now and what would prevent us from sliding.
Randy's been the treasurer for a number of years, so.
So Brian, can you set some time up for Randy and I to sit together next week? Just so I can understand what the concerns are that he had from the past and how I could help make sure that we don't slip toward those things. And that would help him through all these things. I'll come see you wherever you want me to.
Ready? Yeah, it's a pretty short discussion, honestly.
Okay.
It's really the, the, the deficits in years past can be explained really by one entity, which was the airport building.
Okay.
And the loss of revenue.
Okay.
From there after some triumphs.
Okay.
And the cost of us to maintain that building.
Got you, and so now that's been reversed and we just don't want to see other things bleed.
Well, the concern I would have is we're selling off our assets that we've always had and also wrapping anything to sell. All of a sudden, we're going to be still with these kind of numbers, we're just going to be getting behind far and far.
Understood.
Yeah, until we find other investment opportunities, we're going to think of it as a fund balance, general fund. We'd probably have to make up some budget shortfalls potentially with the fund balance because now we're liquid instead of equity stock.
Got you. And so I'm going down to, I'm meeting the Binghamton Commerce, they have their setup, just like we are, they're called the agency. And I'm trying to understand how they utilize the IDA to drive those investments. That's one of the things I'm going to sit with them, they have a person on there like Jenna and Barb that work on that economic development activity. And I'm not sure how to market what we do effectively to get those investments and.
They really mean, what we're looking for is a building that we can pick up very cheaply. I.e. something that a larger corporation may have had and no longer wants, that we can temporarily support when it comes to utilities, maintenance, things of that nature. That we can find a tenant for that'll pay decent rent and maybe willing to retrofit it to their business needs, things of that nature. But somebody that, that may be operating out of a garage-type setting who now needs to expand. You know, maybe they got twenty employees, they want to expand to seventy-five.
Thank you.
You know, something probably in the fifteen, you know, ten to fifteen thousand square foot range would be real nice, right? Kind of like what we had with, with the airport incubator, a little smaller might work. And, you know, if we had a potential leasing.
And we even know that it's not guaranteed because we, the building, we lost so much money on that. The rent, the stuff we were going to be able to have helps sustain us. We lost a lot of money over several years with nobody in it.
Exactly, and I think we need to be conscientious of where that building's located because one of the problems with getting somebody to get that, to take over that airport building was the services available to them. You know, no water system other than a well, no natural gas, right? They not.
I'm not sure if yes, I think they, I think they do have natural gas. The gas line runs through one, twelve.
Yeah.
And I think the primary one.
Just not sure how far it goes. But keeping those things in mind.
I will, so those things make sense to me, Brian. So one of the things that Jenna's doing this month is she's putting on a webinar next week, I think, around the Golden Shovel, which is a place where realtors, businesses can put abandoned buildings, right? Because again, help me, I'm trying to make sure I'm correct, but if we have this inventory of buildings, what we want to pursue before we buy one, we'd like to have potential tenants identify for those buildings, right?
Right, so somebody comes to you and says, I'm, I'm looking to expand.
Yeah.
You know, like a year, a year and a half, whatever, maybe six months? That's when we say, all right.
Let's go into our inventory of buildings and see. And what I'm going to try to help, get some help with, Brian, and the board is checking, how do we market to those prospective people what we have? That's part of what this golden shovel's all about, right? They can help us not only figure out how to inventory our properties and solicit people to put them out there, we need to figure out how they go out. Market those prospective people that want to do exactly what you said, get bigger, expand, and I'm trying to figure out how to do that effect, right?
We just don't want to, we don't want to get back into a situation where we buy a building and it bleeds us for three, four years.
I want to go the other way around.
Because we can't fill it.
Yeah, I want to go the other way around. I'd like to have somebody say, hey, I'd like to say, here are all of our empty buildings in the county. Does anybody have a business that they want to come in? Yes, but I can't afford to buy it. Or yes, I can't afford to buy it and have it be, okay, then I want to help you, right? Then we'll come back to this group and talk about it, right? I mean, try to figure out, I think Binghamton goes, and they, they don't buy the property first, they attract the businesses, then they go out and try to inventory their properties. I'm just trying to figure out how to do that, that's all.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, sorry, Kathy.
Thank you, no bad helping, thank you.
Yeah.
That was, that was all I had to say.
Any questions, any other questions on the financials? Here, I'll attain a motion to approve the December thirty-first financials. Need a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote.
Blanchard, I.
Raymond, I.
Ryan, I.
We are.
Given. Corey, I.
Burton, I. Okay, bills and invoices, you all have a listing in front of you. I assume the town of North Norwich is the pilot for two thousand dollars for the, the road there.
Yes.
That we will no longer have. I think according to the purchase agreement, we will be getting reimbursed for that at the closing, correct?
I'm not sure.
Let's find out.
I, I think that's what, I think that's what we asked, yeah. Yeah, just like any other property, you've already played property taxes, you pay back minus the days we owned it in, in the course of a year.
Makes sense.
I just wanted to let you know that I talked with Tim Ryan from ProTop. Because as you can see, there's airport utilities still on here. He thought that the, that it had been taken care of with NISEC, so he's reaching out to his people and making sure that that is taken care of for next one. He thought it was already done.
Yeah.
And so, and he's, and he's going to, you know, pay.
Okay.
Have no problem, he said, just as usual.
That's, that's what I was going to ask, I was going to start an adjustment, but then we will see next month from NISEC.
Hopefully, we, well, we should get a final reading from NISEC next month. And then we should be done with it, they should be, yeah, so.
Any other discussion?
I wanted to just mention something. We had gotten a NISEC bill, a final termination notice, you know, because the IDA only pays their bills once a month. So when I was town clerk in Guilford, what they did was they paid the utilities ahead of time so that we didn't get the termination notices and whatnot. And then they, you know, just approved them at the board meeting like we do here.
So when the bill comes in, you're auditing a check and then approving them at the meeting?
Well, the, we cut a check and, and yeah, when the bill comes in, the bill's paid.
So we're not getting late charges.
Late charges and all of that sort of stuff. George can, did you guys have to do, make a resolution or anything, or you just?
Town Hall's office allows you to pay certain bills and utilities for one of them prior to auditing the books.
It used to be in the minutes if there was a resolution before it allowed that.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, so that's something that you might, you might want to consider doing. And then that way, the, you know, save a few pennies here and there on, you know, late charges.
Yeah, I'm all for not paying late charges sooner or later. Does somebody want to make a resolution?
I, I just have one question before we move on. Are we on a budget plan with NISEC right now?
I don't believe so.
No, based upon these dollar amounts, I don't think we're on a budget plan.
I, I ask because sometimes if we could go into a budget plan, then it's a specific amount every month that we could approve without having the fluctuation. It's just a thought.
I know it's, it's standard operating procedure for our town. We have, in our organizational meeting, we'll make a resolution to prepay and then of course.
Do you want to do that in March at our, the reorg?
As long as it's, it's in a resolution and it's documented, you can do that.
That's a good idea.
So, yeah, we can do that at the reorg.
Do it at the reorg. Okay, can you have the resolution written out?
Yeah.
As part of the reorg. Good, thanks. And in the meantime, check into the budget thing? Yeah. Do any, do any of the townships that you guys are involved with do budgeting? Do they even?
I don't even know if they would allow it for our municipality, but it's a very good way for, I know other nonprofits have done it.
It allows easier budgeting.
Yes, absolutely.
When coming up with an annual budget.
Yeah, we don't, we don't smooth out like that in just every month because it's pretty consistent. Yeah. Our utilities.
I can check out.
And we're reimbursed for it anyway, because right now, the, once ProTop goes off the utilities, then it's just going to be everything vagary. And we're reimbursed.
That's right, they're paying us back.
Yeah.
We're just a pass through.
Yes.
Right.
And check into it because everything vaguely might be interested in that as well.
Yeah, I'll check into it.
And it could help our, our business as well.
And we'll have, we'll have, we'll at least know going forward.
Especially if the account is under their name.
It's, it's actually under our name.
Under our name, probably.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Yes, no, good question.
I'll check it out.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, need a motion to approve the bills and invoices?
So move.
Need a second? Great, any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote.
Blanchard, I.
Raymond, I.
Ryan, I.
We are.
Given. Corey, I.
Burton, I. Great. Now, for our special guest from Shenango County. Real Prop. Oh, I was going to look for him back. Don't we put Stephen Harris in the corner? We have a special guest today, Mr. Stephen Harris from Shenango County Real Property. We, as a collective group, have wanted to get more information and a better handle on, you know, costs associated with doing these, these solar and wind projects and providing pilots and what everybody else is doing. And, you know, are we pricing things out correctly? And Mr. Harris is, is here today to give us a better handle on that and provide us with some education.
Before we move forward, I just noticed we have a voucher that's not on our list for one hundred fifty-seven forty. It's for the, for the water service.
Oh, remember, I told you I gave you an extra bill.
Oh, yeah, I forgot.
It came in late, so I went ahead and processed it to put it in with the bills.
That's for the, everything that you read, the big bill.
Water bill. Sorry about that, I forgot to put that.
Just before we, before we, you know, try to pass this around.
Yes, I will, I will make note of that in the minutes as well.
Thank you. Yep.
Make a motion.
Need a motion to approve the water bill separately.
Second, Corey.
Okay. And any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote.
Blanchard, I.
Raymond, I.
Ryan, I.
We are.
Given. Corey, I.
Burton, I. Sorry, Mr. Harris.
Sorry, Mr. Harris.
No problem.
And this is also important because what you're going to see, the executive update, we discussed the April twenty-twenty-two audit. And Steve's direction will help us set up the final requirement for that audit, which is the uniform tax exempt policy, which will give us consistency for our policy, for our pilots, and help us be, make us be in compliance with what we need to do from the state's perspective.
Great, four years, Mr. Harris.
Okay, I wish you'd have a little packet that I gave out, and of course, my hair. I'm going to talk mainly about solar, wind, and the pilots that are done. I'll try not to stand in the way.
You're fine.
Just to let everyone know, there's, there's two different incentives out there. There's a real property tax incentive, incentive, and then there's the IDA incentive. They're completely different. The real property tax law forty-seven, that's about at the local level, the town assessor laws for a fifteen-year exemption for solar, wind projects and farm waste energy systems. I don't think we have any in this county yet, but some counties do have them. It's a fifteen-year exemption. A developer notifies each tax levying body, they're tend to apply for the exemption. And then each town, the county, school, district, and village has an opportunity to request a pilot payment. Different from IDA pilots, like payment of lieu of taxes up to what full taxes may have been. We do have a number of solar projects that have gone that route, fifteen years. They've negotiated pilots with myself, I do it for the county portion. Some towns have negotiated, some towns haven't, some school districts have, some haven't. Why, I'm not sure. But, but that, that's out there. The IDA exemption, I can't give you a lot of information about that because I'm not involved with it in depth. It offers various incentives. I know sales tax is an incentive that's, that's available. Party tax exemption for long periods. Here, they're really long and the question marks are, I really don't know. These are just a couple of cons I put here because I really have, philosophically, as a taxpayer in this county and as my role, I have some really philosophical problems with some of the pilots that have been done for solar. We'll talk about it a little bit more as we go. There's very little, if any, county, city, town, village, or school district input. You as a board decide those. The towns really don't have a lot of say in it, the county really doesn't have a lot of say. We get the agreements to sign. You sign, you get something, you don't sign, you get nothing. The exemption terms are too long. You're getting thirty-year pilots. Service life for most of this equipment is fifteen to twenty years. You can Google that, I mean, you can find it out there. And that's at the long end. A lot of the other working pieces to it have service lives of eight to ten years. So there's some, some replacements that's done, the panels themselves, you're only going to fifteen to twenty years service life. You're getting a pilot for thirty, well beyond what the service life of that, that panel is. Payment of lieu of taxes, dollars per megawatt, if they have no too low, here's a low, I'll show you why. And then another aspect of it is your pilots have a very equitable distribution to the tax levying bodies that are involved. Unless something's specified in the pilot that's going to be broken down third, a third, a third, whatever, it gets broken down by tax rate. And I'll show you, town of Norwich, you have the Evans project, the first solar project done. The pilot payment on that's fifty-four thousand dollars. The town, because it's based on percentage of tax rate, gets about a thousand bucks of that. And the town is the most impacted, not equitable distribution then. The school district, who is not impacted at all, you know, garners most of that, that money. So that, that's something that we'll talk about a little bit more. These are current projects that are under the real property tax law exemption. These are ones that I negotiated towns may have. Unless they're in front of anybody. We have, you know, an Afton, actually, there's, there's another, there's two in Afton. One in German, this DG New York, this is the one in the town of Norwich behind Linton Towers, A and J Auto. And there's a Green Community Solar, that's not built yet. The only one that's been built here so far would be the German just completed. The DG is, is done, the Green, the Afton, and the other Afton aren't, aren't completed at this point in time. These companies sent written notification to each tax levying body, the towns, to the county, to the schools, that we're looking at going with the forty-seven real property tax exemption. When they send that notice, each tax levying body has sixty days to respond to it. They're going to inquire a payment of lieu of taxes or not. Some have, some haven't. What I want to show is the negotiated dollars per megawatt that we're getting with people going the fifteen-year term on the exemption. And all of these are smaller projects, they're five megawatt. This one's actually a three-point-two-seven-four, a little bit smaller. The smaller project, this one was, when the first one was negotiated, the total dollars per megawatt is five thousand dollars. The town gets twenty-five-hundred of it, county gets twenty-five-hundred. And the school district decided they didn't want to be involved with it for whatever reason, so they chose not to enter to agreement. The Germans, forty-five-hundred, fifteen-hundred to the county, fifteen-hundred to the school. And then with this, the town got a lump sum community host agreement payment. So I believe it's ten thousand dollars. I'm not sure if it's just a one-time payment or every-year payment. Norwich Solar DG is thirty-five-hundred. That's a little less because anyone that negotiated was myself with the county. So the county gave thirty-five-hundred dollars a megawatt. The town, for whatever reason, chose not to request a pilot in the school district. Didn't request a pilot. They were notified to never request, have to let her back saying, who have to request a pilot. The last one, the town and the county are fifteen-hundred. It was a total that, because I'm not sure if the school district became involved with that one or not, there's a new business manager. And that one's fairly new. It's still in the beginning stages. But that's an idea of what people were applying, the companies are coming in and going forty-seven, real property tax exemption, fifteen years, what they're paying per megawatt. These are current IDA pilots. If Norwich Shenango gets a twelve, twelve-megawatt project at forty-five-hundred dollars a megawatt. You have Ring, you have Pocket Solar, a twenty-megawatt project, two thousand dollars a megawatt they're paying. Norwich Tiffany, which is a five-megawatt, that's three thousand dollars a megawatt. These are amounts to be distributed between town, county, and school. Like how the tree, you have one project that is down to two projects at two and a half megawatts each. These terms are all thirty years. Real property one is a fifteen-year exemption. Some of these do have escalators, this one increases on the sixth year, roughly eleven-point-nine-nine, I think it's supposed to be twelve, but kind of calculate that way based on the pilot's schedule. This one increases ten percent after five years, so it'd be twenty-two-hundred dollars a megawatt. All but the, the Evans one, Norwich Shenango is closer to what we've been getting. These are well below what, you know, we've been able to negotiate. These are the yearly billing, fifty-four thousand, forty thousand, and fifteen. New year, twenty megawatts paying fourteen thousand dollars less than project almost half its size. There's things to look at, too. Most of the projects we get in this county are community solar. That's why they're five megawatt, where they need subscribers through NISEC, basically. There is money involved with that, you know, with Norwich Shenango. When they first started, I'm sure everybody got those cards in the mail saying, you know, switch to solar, this and that. I wouldn't build a shirt over municipal electric, I got four of them. But, yeah, I mean, there's, there's, there's back office work done in those projects. They got to find subscribers, they got to help push their product. The Pocket one is a wholesale project. They don't have those backroom costs, but just the way it is. The distribution of these, this is Norwich Solar, this is Evans. There's nothing specified in the contract, how to disperse those that between town, county, and the school. So it gets dispersed by percentage of tax rate. And town of Norwich has a very low tax rate, there's no town general, it's just a town highway. It's a dollar sixty-five. So they, they get the, the smallest chunk, actually, last year was twelve-hundred dollars. Out of that fifty-four thousand dollars, the town's impacted probably the most. They're getting twelve-hundred dollars of that yearly payment. The school district, who has no impact, there's no extra students, there's no, you know, no added bus in, no added cost to the district, they're getting a chunk of it, thirty-five thousand. And then the county sits, sits in between. But that's, whenever a pilot's written, there's no, nothing specified for distribution, it's tax rate. This is the Tiffany distribution, but the way it would look. And actually, out of this one, the town of Norwich will get three-hundred-and-forty-three dollars out of it. So the district, school district's getting almost ninety-nine. Bottom parts, this is just fire taxes, they pay full fire tax. The fire district, they're in, they're out, the pilot doesn't, agreement with IDA doesn't accept it from that. And the same thing on the forty-seven. This is Pocket Solar. Distribution, the town here actually has a town general, town highway rate, the rate's a little bit higher, it actually gives fifty-one-hundred dollars out of that. The school district gets twenty-two. Again, the town has impacted more than anyone else. My feeling, you know, draws the towns to get a short change. The districts are hungry for money, we know that from Hybridge Wind. There's going to be negotiation with that, the districts wanted tax rate proportions on it. They wanted to basically get, you know, get every dollar they could out of it. And again, they were not intact, there's no new students. You know, you don't have families moving in. School districts don't pay for the roads, there are equipments coming across. The distribution, school district's least impacted, town's most impacted, county's, county's responsible. I, I'm personally responsible for doing all the billing for these, tracking them, doing the billing. I'm personally responsible for doing all the billing for these, tracking them, doing the billing. The comptroller has questions that come to me for it. More equitable distribution, my feeling, would be thirty-three for school, thirty-three for town. And just to make it so it's not thirty-three and a third, thirty-four percent, because I do all the billing stuff for the county, which is similar to what we do, we get it in the low thirties usually. But, you really need to specify a breakdown for the towns who are going to get short change each and every time you do a solar pilot.
So, just based upon what you're telling us at this point, is that the towns are most impacted, right? Like you said, they gotta buy new equipment, they may have to buy new fire equipment, or?
The fire district will get their money regardless, they get full tax on the fire district. Like there's damage to roads and things like that.
So, what I'm hearing is the towns pick up the biggest part of the expense of these projects. Would it be unheard of for, say, the school to be at twenty, the town at forty?
It wouldn't be unheard of, and I think you could do that, because I don't, as, the way I understand basically with pilot agreements is you make everybody informed about it, but there's not a lot of ability for the school district to say we don't agree with it.
Well, the only thing, Steve, and I remember you were involved, I think, I think he was involved, with Evans's. He was a stick for a while, because of Norwich School District.
Correct.
Working with the developer on what they were going to get for the pilot. We did, we made an agreement.
They actually, they, as far as, I believe, they don't have a full process in that negotiation. Only the board does. And from my past experience being on the school board in Sherburne, when we did a Bailey's project years ago, that was pretty favorable. And me, being in the profession I'm in, questioned it, and I was basically told, well, this is the way it is. Or either signs it, or you get nothing out of it. And that's what I've always understood.
So we've always, and that may be legally we didn't have.
I mean, you need to give information out, provide it, but I think the distribution and so forth is really more, I mean, this is, you've had these companies coming in, doing projects, telling you what we want to pay. Yeah, now you have the scooters coming, well, we want this out of that. Well, you don't have a choice in that. Companies don't have a choice to tell you, well, we're going to pay a thousand dollars. I'll tell you something with the the project that's in Coventry, the assessor there was livid with that, because I think that one's going to be around two thousand megawatt? I haven't seen the contract. But, he's an assessor of multiple towns, multiple counties.
We haven't, yeah, there's no contract.
As I know, as I sat in on a Zoom meeting with your attorney, and you there, Carrie was there, about that, and said, no, just, it said X number of dollars, I don't know if it's been executed or not, but the assessor.
This, I mean, Brian, I have, these are all, I have no idea.
I don't know where it's, I haven't seen anything, but I just know I sat in my office at private date that I sat in with that.
So Steve, I mean, here are your recommendations, and we've talked about this before, we welcome this, obviously. What are other counties doing? I mean, Stubeck County has seventy pilots out there, right? I mean, what are the other counties?
The distributions? I didn't ask about the distributions, because they're all very.
Well, I'm trying to think, I'm going, is there some kind of a, because this is supposed to be a uniform tax incentive policy, as we're trying to develop here for this month. The other IDAs in the state must have to adhere and have the same type of thing, right?
Each IDA has their own standard policies.
And I'm just wondering if there's a general.
There's a question that we can ask of a couple of our neighboring IDAs.
Yeah, we'll, I'll try to ask those questions, but if you could just take that as an action.
You know, with the.
Follow up with some of the local IDAs and find out how they do.
With your, with your other property, you know, like your Chabani or wherever, the tax rate distribution is okay because the pilot payments are based on grades. This isn't based on grades. This is based on the dollar per megawatt, there's no tax rates applied. That's why I do the bill, I bill once a year for these, because you can't do a school billing and then a town and county, because you need all rates, know that distribution of these, and we bill once a year for these. But that's something that the distribution really needs to be looked at, because the towns really are getting short change there.
But right now, you're recommending a third, a third, a third?
Basically, a third, thirty-three, thirty-three, thirty-four. But, that's something that I have to do all the paperwork for. Pilot duration. These are counties that I put on my list, sir, that responded to me quite quickly. Use the county, the duration, just some odd notes that they gave me. There are a few that have thirty, but they've gone away from that. Portland County had a thirty, one in green proposed for thirty, but it's not going to be thirty. If you go through, there's fifteen, twenty, twenty-five, fifteen, twenty, fifteen. Some mirror the real property exemption at fifteen, some are slightly longer. Madison County, I was kind of surprised was there, just twenty years, but six, years sixteen through twenty is full taxes.
And Steve, are these pilots through the IDA? Are these pilots through the IDA?
These are IDAs.
Or these are?
These are IDAs.
These are IDA pilots.
These are IDA pilots. Tonkins County, one that I look at quite frequently, theirs are eighteen to twenty years. Oh wait, no, take that twenty years. This was Tyoga, that one at twenty-one, eighteen. Tonkins are all twenty years. So, we do get the, I think what's happening now with the smaller projects like a Tiffany project, or even, I'm going to say the Coventry project. Because they did notify tax levying bodies, you know, I know I sent my letter back saying, we're going to require a pilot. And then they just seemed to jump here pretty quick, because probably the word's out that, geez, go to county, get fifteen additional years, good or bad. I just, I think they're too long, my personal feeling is, and just the research I've done in this industry and so forth, is a five megawatt, it should be fifteen. For larger projects, go to twenty. I wouldn't go over twenty. Not unless there's something, someone can show you where that service life, those panels are good. And I just have a concern, too, that came up after I did this, I was driving home, is you as the IDA, you have an agreement, and you have a leaseback agreement with the developer. All the developers are LLCs, and they all sell, they change hands, all of them, most of them have changed hands. Well, Pocket has it yet, but probably within five years. What happens if at fifteen years, they walk? They're gone. Who's left to clean up that mess? Who has an interest in that property, that project? You guys do.
Well, our town put in a, well, we have a law that's kind of forming right now, it's in front of a lawyer right now, and we have a bond requirement for decommissioning. And, that's going to be required and mandated by us. And the town, Mike, the town's doing that.
Town's smart, yeah, our town is passing. But because, I believe you, maybe you told me this, that anything over ten megawatts, no, maybe didn't, but ten megawatts, I believe, a bond is required, but not anything under?
No, you could buy, require a bond for anything.
No, but I meant, I thought the state stepped in and said.
The state steps in at twenty megawatt.
Oh, twenty?
Twenty megawatt, local zoning doesn't matter. Your local laws and restrictions are superseded for large-scale projects.
So one of the things we could do, Brian, is if, for towns that haven't adopted those types of laws or regulations, we could make that part of our, if anything under twenty megawatts, we would require a bond to clean up, a decommission bond, right?
Yeah, I think if they have the zoning law, we still do it.
I just, I just, and I'd make a question for your attorney. I have a son, this attorney, I should ask him, because he does real property stuff, he does this stuff, so stuff. But, I would be concerned if you do have a liability if they walk.
And LLCs can be tricky.
Yeah.
Or elusive. I got a question on duration, since we're on that. Are there spec sheets, or are there, is there documentation telling you what the life of these solar panels are? Do they provide that so you know it's not random?
No, you just go out and search it, and it's pretty, stand out there in the industry, there's a lot of papers on it.
See, I always felt that the solar companies, it's on them to provide us the information telling us this equipment's going to work.
Yeah, they'll provide the information, but you have to be up to.
But is it based on, is it based on real case, you know, historical case studies, or what? Or is it just, yeah, we move respect?
No, most of it's, some is going to be historical, I mean, we aren't, I mean, solar's not new. Not at all, I mean, it's been around a long, more in, you know, Germany, you saw it for quite a while. Get away from it, but that was their big push for a long time. Now, there's, I think, all this manufacturer specs as far as, you know, lifespan. There is a project, we'll talk about Bainbridge. I don't think, has Payne come here? I haven't seen anything with it yet, but it's a almost twenty meg project. In their, I think their secret sort of documentation they spout, that, you know, expected life expectancy may push twenty years, that's, that's it. This is a developer, you know, in there.
So, the real challenge could be here, that a company is extending a thirty year pilot. And at twenty years, half the panels are not working. Because their revenues are based, I'm just trying to understand this. Because the revenues to the community are based on the megawatts that are produced. All those revenues could be reduced to the county and the school, right?
I think, I think they're all nameplate, nameplate, whatever their plate says they'll produce, that's what they pay on, is producing or not.
Oh, whether they're producing or not, okay.
None of them are producing the megawatts that are there, we just don't have the climate for it. They don't, they operate a very small percentage of.
All right, so I'm trying to understand what would be an issue, so let's say that.
Well, the issue is if twenty years, the equipment's wearing out, it's not feasible, you know, it's like, twenty years, cars get much better than what they were. Things change. And for them to come in and swap out all the panels for, most of these projects are, you know, Evans's was probably, I don't know, nineteen million dollars, twenty million dollars. For them to come in and swap everything out, it's not going to happen.
So.
The point is they walk away.
Okay.
That's the biggest thing.
So if they're still on, even if the, out of twenty panels, only one is working, we still get the contributions, is that what I'm understanding now?
They still pay the pilot, they're still responsible for paying the pilot. At, say it's a twenty megawatt project, and they're not producing anything out of that solar power anymore. They're still responsible for paying the tax.
Right. They're supposed to.
For that ten years.
Because my head is going, wait a minute.
They're supposed to.
If it's based on production, that's what I thought would be at risk.
It's all nameplate, whatever, whatever that unit is designed.
There's concern, Martha, that these solar projects are often sold before they're even completed. So the person who originally applied for the pilot, could be six owners removed thirty years from now, seven, eight orders. Or trying to track down who, and getting somebody who signed up for this. You know, we would just be responsible for tracking that down, that's what he's concerned with. Follow, follow what we're saying?
So a new ownership will have to apply.
And to your point, when that panel degrades to the point where it's not producing, they're not getting any revenue. So their ability to pay degrades pretty quickly.
Their revenue declines sharply because of the age of panels. They're going to say, see you later, and they'll be gone.
So who chases that? Is the IDA chase all of them, or each individual entity that's getting a pilot have to chase them?
IDA has the contract.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it's just, you know, concerns that are out there. Good reason not to give a thirty year pilot, because then you don't have to worry about that as much.
They're just confronted ahead of it.
Keeping a twenty year range. And that's why when the state came into the yard, they wanted to get better control of what we're doing with the pilot, so we know exactly what, if they're living up to the agreements or not.
That's why they want, you know, the annual check-ins. So, somebody's producing, you know, max is twenty megawatts, they're producing seventeen, and all of a sudden, they're producing six. We have kind of a heads up that things are going south.
With the dollar amounts on these two, I was talking to Randy earlier. And the, well, my wife and I share the accessories, do these in town in Madison, the windmills. That's Tom Randy, those windmills were put in in two thousand four or five, somewhere in there, they were the first, one of the first sets of windmills, there was another set built about the same time in Western New York. When those windmills were put in, electric prices had been steadily increasing at the time. And their whole business plan was, electric rates are going to continue to increase, and they'll, yeah, they'll, yeah, we'll make money. Long story, and they went the forty-seven exemption. At that time, the law didn't allow for a payment of taxes the way it does now. It changed after that project went in. But the company did do a payment of taxes for the town and the school district. They didn't have to, but they did, and then the law changed the next year. But with that, at the end of the fifteen years, they had sold, I think, four times in that time span, EDP Renewables, which is a large, large international company, ended up with it. And I sat down with the people, they said, yeah, you know, the value of some of the windmills or whatever were there, but since natural gas became prevalent, electricity prices went down. And that's, that's what we experienced for quite a while. We had an agreement with them to freeze the assessment for three years, four years. I hadn't heard from them, because electric prices were starting to go the other way now. Natural gas is going to be more expensive, electric rates are increasing. And as we go more with solar and wind, you're going to see those rates increase even more. Hope people can afford to live in the state. Pilot dollars per megawatt, these are the three ID pilots now. I asked about this, the previous director, there's actually a phone call, we had with Coventry. I said, you know, you start at forty-five hundred a megawatt. That timeframe, that year, the same company paid seventy-five hundred over in Tonkins County. Same exact development, same project. We did forty-five hundred, it is what it is. But from that point, dropped. You know, it's, and I asked, I said, why do you start low? Well, that wasn't me negotiating that one. And we figured we start low and work our way up. That's like, that doesn't make sense, you don't, that's not the way things work. But then, you know, there's quite a disparity there between the three.
So.
Just looking at face value. Twelve megawatt project, twenty megawatt project, five megawatt.
So with the Pocket Solar, that's the one in green.
Yeah.
They actually started much lower than that.
Oh, I know, I talked to them, they came, they sent a letter for forty-seven, they came to the county, myself, Phil Crandall Treasurer, and Deputy Treasurer at the time, sat down with two young guys, could tell you their names offhand, a couple different times. And, they don't pay anything to start with, I mean, that was it. And they even came back, there was a court case that happened over in, they may even said that here, that our equipment's not taxable, there's a court case out there that says it's not taxable. That's not what the court case was, and I, you know, they called me, talked to me, and I said, no, it's not what the court case is. Having the panels benefiting Cornell University, Cornell University all the way, had nothing to do with the taxability of panels. If they were, if they were real property now. Real property tax law describes them as being taxable real property, so, you know, that's out of the question. That was the last meeting I was asked to come to, is when they were setting that pilot up. And, what I was told at the time, whether it was on the board, then, maybe you remember that.
Well, that wasn't the last meeting you invited to, Steve, I invited you to a couple, as soon as I got here, right?
Well, no, 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 no. I came to that meeting, and I said, no, it's too low, it should be at least forty-five hundred. And, what I was told is, it's more than the property was paying before. And what I was told is, it's more than the property was paying before, generating more tax dollars. That, that's the answer I was given. And so I made the analogy, I said, so I might take my house, double the size, I might pay $100 more. That's more than was paying, you know, generated before. Well, that's different. I said, no, it's no different at all. They kind of got what they wanted, so 30 years, 2,000 megawatt.
Yeah, these negotiations are really all over the map. Randy, you were mentioning that the state comptroller, did they point that out to us that we're just, I mean, they're specific or precise?
They were more, they were concerned that we, we didn't understand the, the agreements we signed with on the pilots, that we weren't following up on our end of the agreement and what was required. The monitoring of it. Well, part of it is self-modern by the company. They're required to send information. Yeah, part of it, been working on that for a while now. And the IDA has got to hammer, hammer them if they don't.
But they would also like to see some type of uniform policy by which these pilots are approved.
If they're not, if they're not forthcoming with the information, can that pilot be pulled?
Matter of fact, it's in your contract. You could probably put some type of that. I don't memorize the contracts and.
Right, because you might have a good working relationship with the original LLC, but as time goes on.
I think a lot of the, the other concern is getting that pilot for a lot of years will amount to, that they won't be, do any of the other legwork that's involved with it. This reminds me of the rural. I've got that discussion too. These, these pilots now, these are possible future IDA projects that were River Soul or Smyrna. They, they, they contacted the tax-loving bodies about seeking the exemption for 47. I sent a letter back, and now Smyrna sent a letter back, school district probably did. This pain solar is just kind of sitting out. There's a pretty good-sized project. I haven't heard anything from them. And I think.
I've been with him twice on a couple of different things, he's never brought that up.
Yeah, so I don't know if they're kind of thankful, I don't know. Then this is the biggie that's in the wind right now, is North Norwich, so 120-megawatt project, roughly 1,100 acres. And the word I've heard in the wind is they plant three of these projects. One in North Norwich, one in Sherburne, and one in Columbus. So just to make you aware that there's some big, this, and this is, this is a subsidiary of Highbridge Wind. North, North Plant. North Plant. North Plant, or Danny Plant, I think. So, just, just to make you aware of what's, what's coming your, your way. This I took off from a, the NISO site, you can see what electric rates are all the time. It's interesting, this is just little food for thought. It shows, you know, where our electric comes from, breakdown. And, you know, you'll see nuclear actually makes up a big portion of it, natural gas, dual fuel, which is natural gas and coal. Hydro, and then they do break out wind separately, they just have it, combine everything else. And then other, other renewables, which solar will fall into that. I'm just, I just put it there because somehow our state, in a very short time, is going to get from this to that. You've seen the number of panels out there now, reaching that goal. I heard something, I don't know where I heard it, it was maybe from county planning. Somewhere, someone said, if you covered all of Shenango County with solar panels, you'd make enough electricity generation to supply New York City. Something like that. Something like that. I heard it some, I just don't remember where I heard it. I think it was against the protection board. Was it? It was just something someone read somewhere, perfectly not on Facebook, but. So it's just interesting to see where, where things are at.
I'm having trouble reading this, so would you tell me what that small slice of renewables is, that percentage?
Over here?
Well, that's what you're saying, a renewable?
1.81.
1.81?
Yes.
Is renewables?
That's, that's renewables, non-wind.
No, is it also hydro?
No, hydro is separate.
Okay, sorry.
Yep. Wow. So, you can go onto this site any time. I mean, it has the real numbers there. I mean, it'll show you, you know, this is a map of the state's different zones. We're in this Mohawk Valley zone at that time with the, the next state price was. It's just an interesting place to go and look at. You can keep it on your computer in the corner and let it run all day and see the price difference. These numbers are high. I was looking a lot higher than Houston, I was trying to see if I could find an old one of these that I printed out quite a while ago. The numbers used to be about $10 less than what they are now. Just, just interesting. Development concerns, not necessarily an IDA concern, but being a county that doesn't have a lot of zoning. We have hillside development that's happened, removal of trees. You take hills, take out what's holding the ground together, should be a concern of people. Weather changes, severity of storms. Shenango County has had a number of flooding instant, instances. Rho Cat affected by, you know, I-1. 2006, there was one Guilford area over in that part of the county. So things, you know, things have changed weather-wise. Another concern is development of viable agricultural land. One of the counties had two different rates. They gave you that a rate if you were using productive, the dollars per megawatt they paid. There was a higher rate if you were taking productive agricultural land out of production. You've got a discount if it wasn't, wasn't viable land. That, that's out, I think, that belongs to the Farmland Protection Board. And that's something we bring up with them, we need this Friday. Because this, this is a, that, that type of standard is kind of a double-edged sword, because some farms are really hurting, they could use the revenue. If the solar company's going to pay more, they may not go. So I'd just like to bounce it off the Farmland Protection Board. The county does have a, a board that's, that's purposes to try to preserve farming. Tourism, the reason I put that there is, our county, probably the number one thing we have to offer is tourism, is people coming here. And I, I wish I had taken a picture of it, but every time I drove up from Walmart, and I saw the Commerce Shenango sign just before the geodesic domes for the fall, beautiful fall, Shenango County, this and that. Right over the top, you saw the solar farm at Evanses. And it's like, that's not a good place for the sign, but. And then health, health and safety, there hasn't been a lot of research that I've seen or come across yet on this, but being in the assessment field for 30, almost 35 years now, different times, you know, transformers are an issue. High, high tension lines are a health issue. All these things have come up as, as health issues at different times. And I think, you know, solar panels are going to end up being one of those, those things that you'll, you'll see. I just put these here just to show as indication, this is where Puckett is. And I'm not picking a bucket, but we have some new viable overs, like a good comparison. This is basically the land before. This is Harvard Hill. And this is what it looks like now with the solar panels. You know, there are some hedgerows and trees left there. This is just a shot of vacant land. And this is an elevation map, just to show, you know, close to, I think, down here, the lowest 930 feet up to 1,230 feet. So there is hillside there. You know, when it rains hard, the water runs downhill. And I'm not sure with stormwater runoff, if they're really, have to be concerned more than just their piece of land now, other people down the road.
You know, speaking of that, would you, you think FEMA would consider that anti-medication? Because our money is based on correcting the problem?
Right. I don't know. I, 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 I really, things boggle me a little bit is, three years ago, governor's budget was heavily on trees. Need more trees in the state. They're looking at doing a new wood forest exemption, so forth. They're lowering the acreage, need more trees to, you know, help fight the current footprint, this and that. And now, we can take down trees with the solar panels and, and it's okay, but it's a difference in where things are. This is a Tiffany solar farm. This is, you know, health and safety, this is a mobile home park. These panels come, I couldn't get a measurement on them, I couldn't spin it the way I needed to. But we're a county that lacks zoning in most towns. So setbacks and things like that, just could possibly be a concern. I don't think there's enough studies on panels and what may we need from them and so on.
I think it's some pretty nasty things in those panels. I, I know it's a concern to some of our people in Smyrna.
Yes.
About, about your water supplies and aquifers. There's cadmium, the things that you could never want to be exposed to, I mean, you can never deal with, you know.
Maybe the county used to develop a solar panel cell, equalizing for income revenue generator. Have you ever seen the, the, the videos and the pictures of, of windmill blades? What they do with them, because they're, they're not recyclable. They dig a big trench, throw them around and bury them. Yeah, okay? But I have to say with windmill side, they do, they do repair, they get, the blades get fractured over time. Windmills and that, and they slow them down because of fractures in the blade. The ones off the Lewis County, they drop blades all the time repairing it, you know, trying to keep them in good shape. They don't get replaced every few years or anything. That's basically it. But, you know, my, my suggestion would be shorten your term, 20 years at the max. I, I look at Toppets County as kind of the, I'll say the gold standard. It's a green county, very green county compared to most counties in the state. You know, they want, they, they, they want green energy. You know, if they do a 20-year, and they're getting, the last, I do have a copy of their, last agreement they did was $4,200 a megawatt. They've been running between $400 and $4,500 a megawatt there. And there's no reason why ours can't be similar to that.
Anybody got anything else or questions for Steve while we have him here?
I do have a question with the railroad pilot, so it was brought up. That pilot runs out summer 31st of this year. It's through 23, and then it's done.
Good.
I'm just curious where this stands, because the section that's in Madison County takes passes.
They have not come to us?
Okay.
We talk sometime.
Okay, I just, I just want to make, I just don't want to be one of those that's next year, and then these values go on the roll. They're not, you know, not in the exempt portion of the roll, they're taxable portion of the roll then. Move, something happened, we need to move these off and move this value off the roll. I just don't want that to, to, to occur.
Yeah.
And with the other pilot, standardized pilot, your Chabani format is probably the, the standard that's used by most areas as far as a 10-year phase-in pilot payment. The North Norwich pharmaceutical is not typical. No. That one probably should have been a phase-in this time, but that one is 10 years, 50%. And that's what it's been for 40 years now, fourth round.
Yeah, I almost think it just basically rolls over every time it comes to a new project.
I forget, I think most of our discussion ends up being around mortgage recording tax in that exemption.
Uh, when they, when they file something mortgage-wise, yeah.
Yeah.
But it should be put in, if you do standardized pilots, that should be put in the standardized pilot format in the future. I think that's part of what the Compro's office had, because you had Sherburne Metals, which was frozen one amount for three years, and it changed for three, the next three years. And if that pilot continued, it would eventually get to 100, but it was, it was stepped over multiple years instead of. Like Chabani one, going from, you know, 95% exempt to, you know, 100% taxable, you know, over 10 years, right?
Yeah, that's something we're looking, you know, we want to work towards in the future.
So Brian, do you, does the board want me to reach out to these other counties and try to see, like, can I get what benefits? Because even so, negotiate, these have been negotiated contracts for a long, long time. Set some parameters in place, it's a general set of rules, and then say, okay, if you need to go beyond those rules, let's get this board in a room together and say, why? And then get Steve and Bill Crane in a room and say, here's why. Does this make sense to you guys, right? So if you want.
So somebody's already doing it well, right? There, there's always somebody out there that does it the best. If we can get their information and model ours after theirs, right? We, I don't think we need to reinvent the wheel here. You know, I, I think this work's already been done somewhere.
Yeah.
So let's get a couple of examples of that.
I will do that.
And move forward based upon Stephen's recommendations as well.
Yeah, we'll see, I'll review them, Brian.
Yeah, with, with this. For years, we've asked and they've not even reinvented the wheel, and they report back to us, and this is what we are now.
Right.
So it's important to, to.
We'll take that as an action item again, Randy, and I promise I'll see. That's why I originally met with Stephen Bill to begin with, right? And at first, up at the town, we went through some of these things. Bill expressed some concerns, asked me, and Steve said, hey, we, and I said, okay, well, what are the, what are the parameters by which she was supposed to be negotiating these things? And he said, I don't think there are any. So I said, okay, well, that's, we can do that. We'll, we'll literally get some examples, fast practices, and say, let's put those in place, knowing people approach us. I mean, because then, Brian, that actually helps. You can actually market that now. If you want to market the prospective solar farms, you say, okay, if you're a 20-megawatt farm, then you get, you get this price. Do you know what I mean? Like now, if you're five, you get this price in these terms, right? It's an easier thing to understand, I think.
Yeah.
In general. I'll do that.
A question on IDA's role versus local assessors. You just mentioned Coventry wasn't happy with that $2,000 a megawatt.
No.
So we went ahead, this is before my time, I believe, once I was not paying attention. But the, the IDA went ahead and, and negotiated those terms. Are the, are the towns involved at all, saying that we, they've come to you, but does, does that, does that give them a leg up just coming to you? And do we lose our autonomy as a town to negotiate ourselves?
Well, once it comes to IDA, you don't have the ability to really negotiate as a town. You're hoping this board negotiates.
No, I know, once IDA decides to do that, then we are out. But how about during the negotiations, does the town participate in that?
So I've always felt that we've done a decent job of involving the school districts and the town supervisors whenever there's a project. They, they've always been brought on board, they've always been asked, most of these projects.
Made aware of, but so you're missing the, the key person, really, is, is the assessor.
The assessor, right.
The school district isn't, the most well-versed person in the solar and wind stuff would be the assessor field. The assessor somewhat maybe, whatever, my office, a lot of work on solar and wind through the years, a lot of research. The reason the assessor Coventry was so upset is he's from Homer area, and they have a large project going in Homer behind the development. And his discussions with the developer there is to go on IDA, you know, going back and forth on the number. The developer was frankly, both, you know, our business plan has full taxes in it. Anything we get IDA is great. That's extra revenue, that's extra money for us. And that's a developer, and that was a large-scale project. I think that's a, maybe towards 120, because it's 1,000 plus acres of farming.
Size is what they want.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's big. And, and if you do a comparison to wind, you know, wind just pick, we have the project in Yelfer, technically it's around $8,000 a megawatt between the community, the community host agreement with the town and what the IDA contract is, you know, so.
My guy, just like from my perspective, I wouldn't know how to possibly negotiate something like that without engaging the town of Coventry and understand, and this board. So I would think that that would literally be standard operating procedure, right, to make sure that.
Well, in most of these, the benefit's high enough that it requires a public hearing as well. Which I can tell you from hosting most of those public hearings, nobody should.
Which I can tell you from hosting most of those public hearings, nobody shows up.
Nobody shows.
Literally.
Even people from Coventry.
Yeah, Coventry. Zero.
Right.
You know, it's, so again.
In that case with the assessor, he thought he was going to get be involved with it or ask something. This is just a cold call, you know, video conference. Oh yeah, this pilot set this, I think it was this amount.
Yeah.
You know, it just took him back. And he's knowledgeable. He's not a person that comes to that.
And that's a good tip too, is to, you know, we need to get assessors on board and ask them questions as well on these specific townships that also happens as well.
I guess I'm just confused, Brian, and we can talk about this when I want to hold people up. Why would the IDA, why would my predecessor ever negotiate something like that that everybody at the town wasn't happy with? I mean, like, that's who it's supposed to be benefiting, right? So I'm not the one property owner, not the one landowner, but for the common good, you're a government agency, which the IDA is, and I'm negotiating on their behalf. Why would I ever? I can't imagine a scenario where if somebody wanted to come to Smyrna and put something in there that was, and they were asking for tax exemption, where I wouldn't sit with Mike Corey saying, Mike, does this make sense? Is this what your board wants? Is this what your assessor wants? Is this who the affected? I can't even imagine that. Like, because you feel like you're negotiating on their behalf, right? So am I, maybe I missed these.
Those meetings are happening.
Oh, they're what?
They did happen.
Right, right.
So those meetings did happen.
Right.
Town supervisors. But he's saying the town supervisor potentially is the wrong person to, well, I don't want to say the wrong person. That shouldn't be the only person you're talking to in those town. It needs to be the assessor too.
Because all these projects have to go, most of the towns have site plan review. And it goes through the county and the towns for the review and they have to approve it. We've never had one come back and not.
Yeah, they're always, they're getting approved by the town supervisors in the county before they're coming to us for a final approval.
Yeah.
Right, as far as the product in the whole, but not.
Not the dollar.
Not the dollar amounts or the terms.
Yeah. But we discussed those because we like, so again, before it was necessary. And I believe there's new law when it comes to school districts and pilots that you have to provide them with all the specific information now. Whereas before, I don't think you necessarily had to include that. But we always did, right? So we would bring in the business manager or the CFO or this deputy superintendent. Say, here's what we're thinking, here's what they're asking for, what's your opinion? It was never about the dollar amount. In ninety-nine percent of the cases though, they didn't like stepped up terms. They don't want stepped up terms.
They want accelerated.
Here's what it is for the next ten years.
Right.
Because they can't budget it.
Plant expenses.
Yeah, I got you. So, yeah, so those people have always kind of been involved or maybe not as much as Stephen's saying they should be. And it sounds like we need to include at least one other body in these conversations, which is the assessor.
Yeah, well, and I have a good relationship with Bill Enstee from the previous life, so I can talk to both of them. I would think I would go to them if you stays with them.
Look, the more input we can get out from the communities they're going in, in or reflecting, the better.
Yeah, I agree. So I'll give some examples of a couple of counties locally because we need those to complete our audit requirements. The board needs to vote out. We said we would try to do that by our board meeting in February, right, Bart? So I'll try to get all that to you guys in advance of that meeting so we can vote on that.
Good.
Yeah, you should just go with a range though. So you should just go with a range of, you know, it's going to be between four or five, maybe forty-two hundred and, you know, forty-five hundred. Don't let the companies tell you what they can or want to pay. Because every dollar they don't pay you makes that, it goes in somebody else's pockets.
Well, Steve, thank you very much for coming in today.
Thank you for your time.
Much appreciated.
And any other questions down the road, just let me know. I'd be more happy to. You might have anger in my.
Great. So in the interest of everybody's time, because that was needed and very important. If we could quickly touch base on everything that's left in the agenda. And we do have to act on something new under a whole business that's not on the agenda.
Yes, we can breeze right through the executive update. The one I want to make sure that you guys were aware of, and it's one of the things that we are going to talk about here, is Sherburne. We talked about the audit thing. The Sherburne Restoration, I met with them. They're a nonprofit. I don't think that's an IDA issue right now. We'll continue to work with them, no Janus following, we'll, there's a number of things. We've gotten a mission statement there that we have. I don't have to give you my executive update. If you guys can take a look and go through it, it's attached. It's a similar one that I used for our planning and economic development group. It's just expanded to talk about the other groups and agencies that we serve here. Tourism, DCC, and marketing, the different efforts that we do that normally I would coach you. So you guys would have exposure to that as well, right? We'll do the IDA update when I do the DCC work. So the most important, I think Brian wanted me to review was on the, you all have a document in front of you. Right here is the draft agreement with the amended and restated lease between us and Norwich Meadows. If you can get that out, please, that's the one piece of business that I think we have to talk about that to get back to our attorneys with. If you can turn to page seven under casualty. Their attorneys have asked our attorneys, I'll paraphrase this, if you guys will help me, I'll put it in my way in terms of the best that I can. What Earlby Meadows wanted was, should there be some type of casualty that made the building unreparable? That they in their, they would then be able to basically get a refund on all of their prepayments and things that they have paid to us. Versus a traditional mortgage where we're holding a mortgage on a house and somebody buys a mortgage that has insurance and there's some type of irreparable damage, they go through their insurance company to be reimbursed. But we then don't have to refund them any of their payments. That's what the attorney has, Kevin Paul, has suggested that we do, is pursue it just like a traditional mortgage. And that's what's now contained in this rewritten document. I, Bart and I talked to him yesterday. It doesn't seem to make sense to us that they're holding the insurance, they're the ones that are responsible for all of the other upkeep. If there's a fire or some type of casualty that they should be responsible for. I imagine this will be a problem for them and they're in urgent desire to sign this. But I want to know if this is accepted by them, can I get the board's approval to sign this? Because they're trying to move quickly on this sale.
Yeah, so that's the one piece of business we need to take care of. And what I'm looking for is a motion to allow Sal the power to sign the amended and restated lease agreement when it is approved by their attorney and our attorney for signature. So that we don't have to reconvene to sign, to approve and sign.
And Brian, you may have to reconvene again because I don't know how ruling they're going to be to accept this. This may be a point of contention for that.
If they accept it, it'll be it.
So if it's set at ten, it will prove by the attorney and.
We're authorizing Sal to sign this. So I just need a motion for that. So, second. Okay. Any discussion?
I understand we're giving Sal the power to do that, but could you just clarify what they're asking for again?
Yeah, I will. I tried, I tried three times.
They wanted us to basically say that we sell a building, their building, and it burned down, that we reimburse them.
We refund their payments.
Their payments.
We refund their payments. We'd say, okay, you prepaid us these fees, you gave us this money, you know, your rental payments that you've given us, we're going to refund them to you. Towards, so any money they paid us towards the mortgage, we would give back to them.
Because it would deem their business in.
Just saying, no, if you're building.
We've got our insurance company.
Essentially, yeah.
Why did we do that?
We didn't do, they did that. We put it in there that they would have to go to their insurance company. They would have, they came back and said, no, no, we want to refund if something happens. So if our business becomes inoperable, we not only don't want to pay you anymore, you only need to give us back all the money we paid. And I said, Kevin, Kevin says, that doesn't make sense. And I said, well, it doesn't make sense to me either. How would we do, how would we do that if we were back? He said, well, the bank would require them to have insurance if their business burned under the ground. Their insurance company would pay them and they would either take the money and rebuild, but they would still be obligated to pay us that money.
So that's what this resolution is about.
That's what the change is.
That's right. No problem.
We're not requiring them to have insurance. We're just requiring them that that's their responsibility.
Correct.
That's exactly right. That's exactly.
And they're accountable if there's a catastrophic event.
Yeah, so if you take out all the red in there, it now reads casualty. If all or any portion of the premise shall be damaged or destroyed due to fire or casualty, then tenant shall be responsible for rebuilding and or repairing the premises at tenants' sole cost and expense. There shall be no abatement of base rent or any other charges payable here under.
Right. We're trying to protect ourselves.
Yeah. We're between the red.
Well, they came back, yeah. So Kevin's been great, frankly.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote.
Glad you're on. Raymond, right?
Diane, I see you on.
Give an A. Corey, I burn I.
I encourage you guys to read the update. I'm not going to kill you, but there's a lot of things that a lot of people are working on. I know Mike and Jeff and George all got to hear it. There's more that I added on there as well, but the group's working hard. I'm doing a lot of, trying to do some things to create economic development in the area.
So at this time I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Guys, have a great day. Thank you.
Do you want to kill the video, Bart?